The Monday, December 2nd special meeting of the Lake Forest Park City Council is called to order. Can I have a motion for adoption of the agenda, please?
So moved.
I got to do the pledge of allegiance.
All in favor?
Yeah, well.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. The agenda is adopted. And I would just note, we have Councilmember Riddle and Councilmember Saunders online, but they are participating in our meeting tonight. Okay, so with that, we'll do the pledge of allegiance. Paula, can you lead us in the pledge of allegiance?
Pledge of allegiance to the United States of America and to your power, which stands. I'm going to go out.
We're all. Oops, I did this out of order. Okay, now, the council will be accepting public comment. This is different than the public hearing on the comprehensive plan. This is public comment on matters within the purview of the city council. The council will not be accepting online public comments. This portion of the agenda is set aside for the public to address the council. On agenda items or any other topic, the council might have purview or control over. However, the mayor or council may not respond to comments from the public. If the comments are of a nature that the council does not have influence or control over, then the mayor or chair may request the speaker suspend their comments. The council may direct staff to follow up on items brought up by the public. Comments are limited to a three-minute time limit. And we have right now two people, David Newman and Sarah Phillips, signed up for a public comment. And so, go ahead, Mr. Newman.
Do anything here?
Nope.
Well, thank you, thank you. My name is David Newman. I live at 16, 44038th Avenue in the Sheridan Heights neighborhood. The matter I'd like to bring, raise tonight with the council is the rising cost of home internet and cable TV service. By my estimate Comcast has raised the cost of a typical internet and TV service about 11% year over year in the last four years. Without a credible competitor Comcast has little incentive to slow these increases. As a point of information, I have a second residence in another state. The internet provider is Spectrum formerly Time Warner. As soon as Verizon wired my neighborhood, actually it was fiber optic cable, not wires, Spectrum miraculously offered a huge discount on my service from $149 a month down to $99 a month. But currently there is no viable alternative to Comcast in my Lake Forest Park neighborhood, and I'm not aware of any in the rest of the city. If you look for an alternative, say from Zipley or Quantum Fiber or others, you get this message. We're almost there, smiley emoji. Your area is next to, for our service expansion. Stay tuned for updates. I've gotten the same message for the last four years. So Verizon offers wireless home internet service, but the availability is very location dependent because of the peculiarities of radio signals. We have a lot of trees and hilly terrain. At my address, they offer 50 megabit service, which would be about one tenth to one twentieth of the speed of cable. And about one fiftieth of that you would get fiber optics. And that's for $60, about $60 a month. But of course, that's just for the first year. So it is cheaper and acceptable for casual use, but there's no television, and so it's not a meaningful competitor. So my question to the council, questions are, can we do a polling or an analysis of the other Lake Forest Park neighborhoods to see if there is any other service being offered there? I don't know if the other companies have wired other neighborhoods. And lastly, is there anything we can do to incentivize real competitors to come in? Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Newman. And next is Sarah Phillips, please.
Hi, my name's Sarah Phillips. I live in Lake Forest Park. And I wanted to extend an invitation to make sure all of you knew that we were, the Milwaukee Forest is having its first birthday party. The forest is in and has been planted, and we really encourage the skeptics to come because, you know, it's fabulous. The trees of, oh, the leaves are coming down now, but they are grown. The cottonwoods are 12 feet tall. And they were, you know, we planted a stick farm a year ago. And we're going to have a unveiling of what we're calling the Welcome Stone. That's done by a native carver from the Sklong, Lower Sklong tribe. And the other thing I wanted to do was just bring you up to date, really the zip by the Climate Action Committee. And that is that, just to let you know, we're meeting with Kenmore tomorrow, the Kenmore Climate Action Committee, to begin to see if there are common areas that we can work on together, like programs about the public services and also the piggybacking on the Solarize Kenmore program that they've offered. They've offered Lake Forest Park residents to participate in that as well. The other thing I just wanted, two other things I just wanted to quickly highlight. One was that if you go into the commons and you're looking at the stage and you turn to the right, there's some stuff on the wall. And it's a rough draft of what we're calling a climate hub that's being developed. We have gotten permission from Merlang Geyer to take that wall and do information on climate. And we've, we're working with some local artists to do a mural, so there'll be a mural up there that has, that the community will be invited to participate, like the one, the Jersey Barriers on the park. And so they're going to sort of do that. And then inside this mural, there'll be displays that change. That some, one group could take a piece and do something. A couple of us, for example, met to think about what kind of generators we needed. And so we have a lot of information about generators, and that, this is a timely moment, and it might be something like that that goes up there. The other thing is that we're nurturing a local individual who is interested in creating, she's calling it cable, and it's a climate neighborhood groups, where, sort of an informal network of people who are looking at climate issues. So for example, although the, whatever that thing was, the climate bomb, what is it? That's not right. Bob, yeah, was not a climate event. It had the impact so that, you know, so that neighbors would know who needs a generator, who's on oxygen, who's on, and but, and that would be just one example, but other kinds of things, if they're interested in what kind of cars you can buy, that sort of thing. So I just wanted to let, know that that's, we're nurturing that along. And again, I encourage you, I understand that you can't RSVP through a Evite, so just let us know. You don't have to, you don't have to RSVP to come.
Thank you very much, Sarah. And I would note that our vice chair, Fortani, has suggested we have Seattle City Light Center representative to come and talk to us about the outage and their plans for the future, so that we don't have as extended an outage in the future. Because in my recollection, that was the longest outage that we had ever had, and I was without power till Saturday night personally. So I know many of, many of you were as well. So hopefully we'll hear something and, and be able to have them get questions from the council and hear more about their plans for the future, because storms like this are not going to be rare in the future. So, anyway. Is there anyone else in the audience who would like to make public comment during our public comment stage, which is, as I mentioned earlier, different from the public hearing on the comprehensive plan? Anyone else? Okay, with that, public comment is closed. And now we're moving on to the public hearing on ordinance 241306, adopting the 2024 comprehensive plan update as the comprehensive plan for the city of Lake Forest Park. And we'll start with a staff presentation and questions from the council.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor and Council, Mark Hoffman, Community Development Director. Tonight, this first item is a public hearing. We don't have a formal presentation. Christina Hayworth is available to hear and consider public comment for the record. It's been a two-year process, heavily based on an adopted public participation plan. The first year was primarily visioning, work on the city's mission to update the existing comprehensive plan, extend out the planning window to 2044, meet state legislative mandates, regional plans like Vision 2050 and so forth. The second year of that effort consisted of the Planning Commission, special and regular meetings from January to September, a public hearing at Planning Commission, a recommendation, and a recommendation draft to the City Council in September, and I believe seven council meetings up to tonight to go through a comment and amend as appropriate the comprehensive plan. There is no formal presentation for this public hearing, as it's another opportunity to hear from the public prior to final discussion and potential action. The comprehensive plan is due under the Growth Management Act by December 31st, 2024. Thank you.
Thank you, Director Hoffman. Questions from the council? Thank you. Any questions?
Yes, it's Councilmember Riddle online?
Councilmember Riddle is online, yes, as is Councilmember Saunders. Yes, I'm here.
So this is sort of unorthodox, but I wanted to address Councilmember Riddle. You had some concerns about the organization of that one particular section. Have they been dealt with in the current version?
Yes, T1 has been expanded to have sort of three subheadings that group like policies. So I believe that addresses my concern and makes it easier to digest. Thanks.
Councilmember, oh, Councilmember Goldman, please go ahead.
Yes, a quick clarifying question. On the, the public facing agenda packet appears to have three copies of the comprehensive plan in a row. Are they, are there differences between them, or is it just printed three times by accident?
Are you referring to the website?
The, if you go to the agenda for tonight's meeting, it lists three 250-page comprehensive plans in a row, and also our public, our private facing council packet does the same.
There, there should be one. It's the new public hearing draft. The three on the website are various stages. The Planning Commission recommendation, the one that was used for council review, and then one that incorporated all the council comments that's available for the public hearing tonight. There will be additional discussion formatting before adoption, but I'm not aware of three posted on the MUNICO.
What I mean is that the agenda is, is 850 pages long for tonight's meeting, and it appears to be like three 280-page comp plans in a row.
Yeah, I'm not aware of that. My review had one, one draft open that I reviewed for my comments.
Councilmember Saunders, any questions or comments?
No, I'm good. Thank you.
Okay. I would note that there are on the website multiple copies, including the Planning Commission recommendation and the, an earlier working draft, and then the version that was the result of our seven meetings and reviews, some of them going till nearly midnight on more than one occasion, going page by page through the comprehensive plan. So for the community, I will note that both the Planning Commission worked for months on this, and the council members themselves have gone through page by page and made revisions to reflect what we think is the intention and the values of the community. So at this point now, we are, I think, ready to hear once again from the community on what your comments are in this latest draft. So with that, I'll call Nigel Kiefer. Mr. Kiefer, please join us.
My name's Nigel Kiefer. I've been a property owner in Lake Forest Park since 1981. Well, looks like your consultants, Cascadia Consulting Group and SCJ Alliance, gave you just what you asked for in the 2024 comprehensive plan update. 277 pages of bureaucratic dribble placating woke DEI ideology and climate change hysteria mandated by the legislature in King County. I don't accept that this policy roadmap reflects the community's values and visions for the future. The comprehensive plan update contains poison fruit from a poison tree. The Climate Action Committee and Planning Commission have lobbied for the climate agenda and DEI ideology by their goals of climate commitment, racial and social equity, and environmental justice. The poison tree is the Growth Management Act goal number 14 in the 2003 legislature in House Bill 1181. The King County CPPS and Puget Sound Regional Conference Vision 2050. Rather than a vision, it does appear more of a roadmap for progressive leftist tyranny. Where is the 20-year financing plan for all the goals envisioned? What will all these goals and visions cost the taxpayers? Some of the goals are reminiscent of Proposition 1 in 2021, which was rejected by the voters. It's a propaganda gimmick to increase property taxes to fund special interest agendas. The Planning Commission documents expose the deception such that goals should be an intentionally vague overview of the future vision. I do not want or need a climate change and DEI government overlord dictating how I am to live, what I can buy, what I can think, what I can eat, what sorts of energy or fuel to use, and how far I can drive and to where. I don't need any of that from any of you. I suggest that you are on the wrong side of history going forward.
Thank you, Mr. Kiefer. Next, I'd like to call on Mark Phillips. Mark, come forward, please.
Thank you, Council, Deputy Mayor. I'm Mark Phillips. I am a resident of Lake Forest Park. And I did want to make a couple of points, I guess, or share some comments that are at least tangentially related to the, to the comp plan that you're working on. And the first has to do with, first one has to do with what's referred to many times in that document as the Community Forest Management Plan. And you know that it was written in 2010, and that was 15 years ago now. And it doesn't, it's fairly fair to say that quite a bit has changed in the last 15 years, including how we do in fact manage our forest. So I really think that that document needs to be on your agenda for the next year in terms of getting some progress, getting it started at least to update and revise that Community Forest Management Plan. If we want it to be more than just a kind of a placeholder, if we'd like to be really a living document that, that has information that's useful to us. There's, you know, there's been two code updates, significant code updates since then. There's information in there that's either irrelevant or outright erroneous. So it really is an urgency, I feel, about getting that, that plan updated. Now, the comp plan says in EQ 8.4 that that calls for an advisory committee to monitor the Community Forest Management Plan. And so in a lot of ways, the, in most ways, the Tree Board has provided that function in terms of monitoring. But it doesn't say anything in that, in the comp plan about updating that document, the Community Forest Management Plan. So I just want to say that I think it would be good for the council, the city, to move on that sometime before too long and figure out a way that, to go about doing that. I do think that there's probably a role, one way or another, for the Tree Board in that process. So that's just 1.1. The other point I wanted to make has to do with housing. And it's certainly clear from the data, what we know about our city, that there is a need for smaller housing units in Lake Forest Park. And there, obviously, as you know, many different ways, it could, several major ways anyway, you could go about doing that. I think all the right words are in the, in the comp plan to allow that to happen, so I'm pleased with that. Specifically, I'd like to point out cluster housing as one of the ways that I think could be done, at least under the umbrella of the comp plan, but obviously would require additional legislation. We did try it once. I was a council member then. I think several of you were also council members then. It didn't work out. I think we should learn lessons from why it didn't work out, because it is an attractive way, I believe, to provide for, or can be an attractive way, to provide for somewhat affordable housing in smaller size units. So I would take the old, the old code and take a look at it and figure out how, make it work. The other thing, just one last thing I'd like to point out is your comp, the comp plan EQ 5.6 alludes to a 70% recycling rate in Lake Forest Park. I'm pretty sure I remember that we, as a goal, as a goal for Lake Forest Park. And I'm pretty sure I remember that we reached that goal at some point in the past. And I just wonder if I'm wrong on that, fine. If not, we might want to check that. Because we should have a goal that's, causes some kind of stretch, I think, in terms of working towards. So thank you very much. I'm generally pleased with the comp plan. I, you know, like many of you could probably tweak it forever, but I think it stands pretty well the way it is. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Sarah Phillips.
Hi, my name is Sarah Phillips. I live in Lake Forest Park. I had a chance to, I read through the comp plan a couple of times at different iterations. Once, when the comprehensive, the Planning Commission asked the Climate Committee to do some integration of what we had done in the Climate Action Plan. And then I read it again. To tell you the truth, I skimmed it this last time. But I did do a word search for emissions and found a number of places where it talked about emissions, all of which were about methane, I mean, the ones that showed up in the word search were about methane emissions and some emissions related to land use and not emissions related to what is the biggest source of emissions in Lake Forest Park, which is cars and trucks and off-road vehicles. And I think as we think through that, there might be, I couldn't figure out where to put it. So I'm just, you know, I looked at whether there was a way you could tweak the vision to add something about the reduction of emissions from vehicles, but I didn't see how that could easily be done. So I'm just raising that as sort of an issue that I saw as sort of an oversight, given your commitment to the reductions of emissions. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Sarah. Is there anyone else in the audience who would like to speak at the public hearing on the comprehensive plan? Philippa Casover, please come forward.
Thank you. Good evening, Council and Deputy Mayor. I will admit that I haven't read it in extreme detail, because I've been kind of busy. But what I have read, I'm very pleased to see. I'm particularly pleased with some of the new zoning regulations that you have. I think the idea of having a zone that is focused on preserving trees and, I can't remember what you call it now, the preservation one.
Conservation.
Yeah, yeah, very conservation. Thank you. A very good idea. And I appreciate that the Planning Commission and the council have done that. It's a little curious to me exactly how they got the boundaries and why there are some lots in and some lots out. But, but anyway, I think it's a good idea. I also appreciate the focus on improving the pedestrian opportunities in Lake Forest Park. And I think that does go some way to what my friend and colleague Sarah Phillips was just talking about, to reduce emissions. The more walkable and bicycable, bikeable we can make our city, the lower emissions will necessarily be. So I appreciate that. And a lot of work has gone into this. I want to thank all of you and all of the folks who worked on it. And I do believe, having lived in this city since 2007 and knowing a lot of folks, that this does represent the values of the city of Lake Forest Park, and I commend the work that you've done on it. So thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Philippa. Is there anyone else in the audience? I come on forward.
Thank you. Good evening, Council. I'm Richie Allen. I'm a 10-year resident of Lake Forest Park. And I just wanted to express my support and thanks that you have considered adding more housing and changing zoning to allow more housing and allow more families to be part of the Lake Forest Park community. I feel grateful that I am living here in Lake Forest Park, and I am happy that I, my family was able to afford it. And I hope that the council knows that the community are, are appreciative of your work and that you are pushing for more affordable housing in, in Lake Forest Park. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Richie, and thank you for being a member of our commission. Any other public comments? Jack Tonkin, please come forward.
I've got to give a plug for ADUs. I think what we tried to do two, three years ago, and some of you still have the binders, in getting everybody excited about ADUs. They were not affordable in terms of the affordability for housing. Didn't answer that, but what it did answer was that if a resident was a little bit pushed to pay taxes, that they're continually going up, and they want to stay in the park, but it's just financially getting more difficult. And then when this code broke, where everything now, single family is multiple, it's just whets the developer appetite. And the offers that come in to these people who are questioning how they can still stay here becomes a solution. They can sell and get out, and they're gone. And then what you get in return for that is questionable in terms of neighborhood. And so now, what I'm encouraged by is that you're revisiting the ADUs and coming up with some plans that can be pre-permitted, which would be a big help to people out there who just don't know how to develop. So, and go through that process. It's just a killer. But if it's all done and they got permitting plans to pick from, that takes a lot off the table. And then from a financing standpoint, we have not updated those books. So we would be happy to do so and get the real estate information you might need and the, and the loan lending information up to date that you might need. But we don't want to go through that if it's just going to fall to, to waste. The other thing that's happening is because this is such a nationwide issue, there is a number of people who are building homes, portable homes, that can, don't require the framing and the foundations, and they can be hooked up quite easily. And they can be hooked up quite easily. And right now, for example, Amazon is selling them and as Godey has got a pamphlet that I gave her, is the, Amazon is selling one for forty-eight thousand bucks. It looks pretty sweet. So the price is coming down. And there might be something there for affordable housing. So the people that want an income, they don't, the property is all paid for. They can get to put a house up there and they can certainly rent it below income for what the standards are. And that might be somewhat of a solution. You could exhibit it down at the waterfront park until it's used and have people come down and take a look at that thing. And then maybe auction it off at the end of the term. Lots of things you could do. You got to think out of the box a little bit, but there's opportunities there and I hope that you you pursue those. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Jack. Is there anyone else in the audience who would like to speak as part of the public hearing on the Comprehensive Plan? Going once, going twice. The public hearing is closed. So with that, we'll move to questions to the staff from council members that may have come up from the public hearing or any other questions you might have. Council members. Yes, Council Member Goldman.
Yeah, I wanted to follow up on the zoning changes. And so I am glad that we've simplified the number of zones. My question is, what would the next steps be? And so would we be going back to the Planning Commission to ask them crafting an ordinance for how to implement the new zones that are in the comp plan? Like, what would our next steps be?
The draft Comprehensive Plan update contains the policies that would allow that implementation. It's a policy document. Another effort that's already underway is the metal housing to meet the recent legislation. Those are Development Code amendments due by June fifteenth of two thousand and twenty-five, or this city will be subject to a model ordinance put in place by the Department of Commerce. That effort is already underway at Planning Commission. We did some work in November. The first meeting in January is likely when some work product will begin and to be available. Those will change the codes. While the policy is in this draft document that supports those development regulation amendments, those amendments need to be crafted, drafted, considered, and means tested for the conditions in Lake Forest Park as a tier-three city. Thank you.
Any other questions or discussion of the issues raised in the public comments? Yes, Vice Chair Foratani.
To address one of the members of the public, I think the, okay, so the number that I got out of the background analysis, volume two, page one twelve, was that at least Cascadia thinks that the Lake Forest Park's recycling rate has reached sixty-five percent. And the citation is to a King County Solid Waste Three Plus program document. Do you have any other information on this?
Not that detailed. I remember, I recall a lengthy discussion at Planning Commission on that very policy, and it was kept as is in your draft right now. I don't recall the exact words. You know, the tape would have that, but they considered it, and their recommendation was brought forward. It has not been amended at council.
Thank you.
Other comments or discussions from council members in the room, and then we'll go to the online folks. Anything else? Council Members Riddle and Saunders, any comments or discussion based on the public comments?
None here.
And none here either. Thank you.
So council members, what is your preference? We can vote on the Comprehensive Plan tonight, or we can postpone that decision to the council meeting on the twelfth. Yes, Vice Chair Foratani.
Point of order, I don't think we can vote on it tonight because there's a December eighth deadline about getting comment back from the state. Yeah, okay.
Okay, thank you. I had, I had forgotten that there was the state comment loop that we had not closed. So thank you. You should be Deputy Mayor. Or at least Chair of the meeting. Okay, so with that, we will close out the discussion of the Comprehensive Plan and move on to item C, which is Ordinance twenty-four thirteen oh three, amending chapter sixteen point two six of the Lake Forest Park Municipal Code in accordance with amendments to state law adopted in Senate Bill fifty-two ninety. Thank you, Director Hoffman, once again.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor and Council, Mark Hoffman, Community Development Director. This proposed ordinance tonight is the second presentation that was introduced at the November seventh meeting and substantially explained that it is a response to mandates and recent legislation. This draft ordinance is crafted to fit those requirements in that bill that apply to a city of this type and size. Two, two things to point out that have been changed in your material since that meeting, some dates were added. And the feedback about the reporting was amended in section four. So that should be reflected in, like, every time we read a new document with fresh eyes, over and over, things pop out that you should have seen before. There is another date change, and that's the date of the public hearing. And in the second version that you have tonight, it says December second. That's tonight. The actual public hearing is November seventh. So we will be amending that, too. There is no urgency to pass this. It is a proposed ordinance that needs to be sent in place in two thousand and twenty-four. If it is not in place by January first, two thousand and twenty-five, then we are subject to the regulations in Senate Bill fifty-two ninety. The draft ordinance achieves what we need to achieve to meet those mandates. We anticipate making that one more edit and bringing it back for consideration on December twelfth.
Thank you very much. Questions or comments from council members? Yes, Council Member Leva.
Just want to go back to a couple of things. You had mentioned in the copy you received tonight, it still says public hearing on December second.
Exactly. That's the third change that I noticed today to ensure that the other two changes were made into the second version. That should be November seventh.
So I'm sorry. So the third version is the one that we haven't seen yet. Is that correct? Because the version I got tonight and the version I printed out online both say December second.
Exactly. Yeah, we didn't anticipate passing tonight. It's not urgent. Before City Council takes action, the second recital from the end, whereas a city council held a public hearing, still currently says December second in your packet should read November seventh.
Okay, thank you. And then if I may, in the whereas we have, in accordance with the requirements set forth in RCW thirty-six blah, 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 the city provided the Washington State Department of Commerce notice of the city's intent to adopt the proposed amendments on October eighteen and received notice the department has granted expedited review on November fourth. When do we anticipate those comments so that we may review them?
There are no comments. And so one option when you submit to Commerce is for the sixty-day required review is to request expedited review if no comments are anticipated. This was of that nature. The city requested expedited review. That comment period was closed that November fourth date. There are no comments.
I'm sorry, November?
November fourth, two thousand and twenty-four.
So the department granted the expedited review on November fourth. So that means that when they granted the expedited review, that meant that there were no comments?
That memo that we receive states that November fourth date and says that we have met all requirements of Commerce review. There are no comments forthcoming.
Oh, could we clarify the whereas such that it reads that we have no comments from the
No comments received.
No comments received.
Yes.
The other is there's a provision that let's see, SB Senate Bill number fifty-two ninety, this is on the second paragraph of the executive summary on page eight forty. Senate Bill number fifty-two ninety also provides that portions of permit fees will be refunded if the deadlines are not met. Refund provisions can be eliminated if a city adopted at least three of the ten designated mitigation measures. Now, and then it goes on to say the whereas is clauses in the proposed ordinance explain which mitigation measures the city currently has in place. Does that mean that the city will not be providing refunds? If, because are we interpreting that we have sufficient mitigation in place such that we do not have to provide refunds?
Yes, with adoption of this ordinance.
It would be good if it's clear that by adopting this, we are not providing refunds because we have achieved or met the requirement that we have three of at least the ten mitigations. Because in reading this, it wasn't, it sort of suggested, but it didn't sort of, you know, I was going a long way around the bush.
Yeah, it would be clear.
It would be clear to say that the city, in fact, has met the mitigation requirements and therefore no refunds are going to be provided as part of the permit reviews in the event we run long. That's the intent, correct?
That's correct.
Thank you.
Yes, Council Member Good.
Under the whereas Senate Bill SB fifty-two hundred concerning consolidating local permit review processes. So I'm assuming that that is processes and not consolidating permits. I'm just looking for clarification.
Can you repeat the section I was writing?
It's under the ordinance. It's the third whereas. And it says Senate Bill SB fifty-two hundred concerning consolidating local permit review processes.
Yes.
So am I correct in assuming that that means just the review and not consolidating permits?
You're correct. Yeah, the bill is pretty diverse, contains a lot. Not all of it applies to our city. Those sections and mandates that do are in, are covered in this ordinance. And no part of that refers to the consolidation of permit types. Type one, type two, type three.
Or multiple lots or?
Nothing of the sort.
Just checking.
Yeah, thank you.
Other comments or questions? Council Members Saunders or Riddle, comments or questions?
I'm good. Thank you.
No comments. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. And I do want to say thank you for meeting the mitigating measures so that we don't have to do the partial refunds, which is kind of a penalty for for local jurisdictions imposed on us from the state legislature. So I agree, we should have efficient processes. I just don't think the city should have to pay a penalty. So thank you for the work to document the mitigating measures. Much appreciated. And thank you for the language on the reporting. We didn't want to do more than we had to or more than was difficult financially for us to be able to report on. So thank you for that change.
And the wording as is sets us up for potential changes in the next few sessions.
Right.
Thank you.
Right, thank you. Yes, any other questions or comments on this one?
Deputy Mayor.
Oh, yeah.
Do we believe that we'll be able to meet the timeline because it is incumbent upon us to respond promptly?
Each permit review is different. Some take a lengthy amount of time. A lot of the time is on the applicant. In a perfect world, in our processing, once we are fully staffed, many of those types we have, we already meet
Okay.
with insufficient staff. But I can't speak to all permits because, you know, it depends on when they come in, how many we get, the staff available at the time. With those four measures, one of those is overflowing the availability. Somebody to step in in high demand periods, and that's our intent.
Very good. Thank you.
Director Hoffman, can you remind me, I know we've had this conversation before, but my concern is we have a small staff and if we have complex permit applications, we need to retain extra consultant services to be able to review and process those and certainly to do that in a timely manner. Can you can you just generally address that question of either a complex residential or, say, mixed-use permit? How we would proceed to be timely with our limited staff?
That technical review, and we never lose the ability to ask for more materials. The burden's on the applicant. But in reviewing their materials, let's say it's for geotechnical or various aspects in preparation for a hearing or decision. We have those resources available. For instance, Geotech, their, our contract with Pace Engineering, they have a well-qualified third-party independent geotech available to us, and we're currently using them. One thing that I've experienced over this year is many of our contracts per age. And we anticipate not only the efforts of fully staffing, but circulating with the administrator requests for qualifications in all categories and refreshing those resources on a competitive basis. We haven't had time this year. There's quite a bit on our plate where we can, where we could, we did, most recently the hearing examiner to keep us going. But the anticipation is next year, we will have more staff resources to help us. And we will have more opportunity to refresh contracts going into the future and broaden the scopes or provide the detail on those scopes for those resources to give that specialty technical comment.
Thank you. It's very helpful. Okay, anything else on this agenda item? This being a special meeting, we can't add anything else to the agenda. So we are adjourned. It will, except for adopting